Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM the posted time for the day's meeting of February the 4th, 2025, of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. This time I'll call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a chair?
Yes, sir. Do we have a corner? Yes, sir.
All right. Next item will be the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. That will be led by Commissioner Bridges. Invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand. Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and all the many blessings you give to us, Father. Father, it's such an honor to serve, and I just pray that as we go into our meeting tonight, Lord, that everything said and done would be within your will, Lord. And I'd ask that you'd be with people in western North Carolina and California with all the problems they're having. And, Lord, as always, I just ask you to, God bless America, our state and our community. In these things, I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials who may be present.
Beth. Janet Gerald, Mayor of Keystone.
Thank y'all. Next, I'll yield to Commissioner Hutchins, who will recognize any veterans present.
Let's start back there. Introduce yourself and your branch of service.
David Fletcher, United States Navy.
Bobby Dyer, United States Marine Corps.
Terry Ward, Air Force.
Richie Hooker, US Army.
Sherri Yoko, Air Force.
David Goddard, United States Navy.
Johnny Hudson, US Army. Hey, the one standing is all of them got one of the county veterans pen.
Sir, tear it up.
Just tear it up.
If you hadn't come forth, then I'll give you one. I'll come around there. I want to thank everyone for your service. Appreciate you coming tonight. This is a county crib under, it's got a rock, it says, red. Appreciate you. And this is a star, and it tells you that it's blown over a building or whatever to it got torn and worn, and they cut it out. You can read it on the back. Appreciate you. Everybody got one? You got one?
Next, we'll recognize the law enforcement that are present.
Neil O., Black Ash Air Force.
Anyone else? Thank you guys for being here. Thank you for all you do. And last one, recognize any county department heads.
Chris Martin.
Kevin Hansen, Health Department. Carrie Meltin, Assistant County Manager.
Bill Seffert, Plans.
Sherri Ladd, Her Tax. Sandra Orvick, Race Director. Rebecca Johnson, Social Services.
Thank you, guys. All right. First item on the agenda, commissioners, before you use the motion for the, before you use the proposed agenda, we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing all those fair will say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? What she carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk?
The public comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speakers shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Thank you, Phyllis. Tonight, we have a few. Please excuse me if I mispronounce a name. Some of these are difficult to read. Read, I'll do my best. First is Bobby Dyer.
Well, sit just here. This is one of many around the county. And I mean, you can ride around here where you want. I can show you more if you need to. These are the pictures I brought. One of many around the county. I've got 30 or 40 videos. I'm not going to share all of them with you. I'm just going to share this one with you, just to let you know. My name's Bobby Dyer. I live at 119 Mike Clettre Road, Kings Mountain. I urge you to stand up for the county. Remember, at the court of decision, officials are expected to keep the interest of the public, not themselves, in mind. In North Carolina, noise ordinance that allows that regulate and control excessive or disruptive noise. These ordinances are in place to maintain peace and quiet in residential areas, protect public health and safety, preserve the quality of life for residents. North Carolina General Statute 153A-133 Noise Regulation states a county may, by ordinance, regulate, restrict, or prohibit the production of emission or emission of noises or amplified speech, music, or other sounds that tend to annoy, disturb, or frighten any citizens. North Carolina General Statute 153A-132.1 to provide for the removal and disposal of trash, garbage, et cetera, reads, "The Board of County Commissioners of any county is hereby authorized to enact ordinances governing the removal, method of manner of disposal, depositing, or dumping any trash, debris, garbage, litter, discarded cans, or receptacles, or any waste matter whatsoever within the rural areas of the county and outside and beyond the corporate limits of the municipality of said county. Besides looking like a rat-infested eyesore, it is also a public health hazard." There's a lot of counties in our state that have ordinances. They can be crafted to work for Cleveland County. It's a sad day when a family spends their entire life to build a home, and when protection from that home life is invaded, the only answer you can get from elected officials and county employees is, "We can't do anything to help you because we don't have a county ordinance for that." Don't be a county that doesn't care about the citizens that live in it. Stop kicking can down the road. Stand up for our county and the people that put you in your elected positions and pass ordinances that keep our county from being an embarrassment. Don't be a county that embarrasses our new congressman, Tenmore. Protect the public so you can live in a clean and quiet environment. Don't embarrass Cleveland County. Put your biases aside and do what's right for your citizens. Act now. Thank you. And I'd like to have any volunteer up here that can move this unlicensed shelter to your backyard. Thank you.
Next is BJ Zamora.
Good evening. BJ Zamora, 504 Country Club Acres, Shelby, North Carolina. I'm here to speak and hopefully get your attention about two issues in the county. One, Mr. Byers addressed, the ordinances. I know that the commission voted a number of years ago on many animal protection ordinances, including registration of dogs and a bonus if they are neutered. I'm sure you all are aware that there are hundreds and hundreds of dogs in this county who have been abandoned, have been lost, have been just left to survive on the roads, who are not neutered and therefore produce more puppies. There's the feral cat issue, which is just as bad in this county. I beg of you all to consider or reconsider your previous ordinances about doing something. I commend you for the work you've done to improve the county animal services. But if you're paying for a full-time vet, that vet needs to be spay and neutering every day. Cheaply is possible because there are people who cannot afford vet care but who would want it for their animals. I would really like to comment on the noise question. I've worked with three volunteer animal rescue groups here in Shelby. We all want to help the county improve the lives of the animals that we own and care for and want to have in our lives. However, we can't do that if we have petty little fights about who has what and not. There's been an issue that has really irritated me when one leader of an animal rescue that I worked with for a number of years suddenly decided that no other rescue mattered but hers. And I'm sorry for that. And I apologize to you, to be witnesses to it. But the organization I'm currently helping, CARE, is doing amazing work. And I'm sorry that there are so many dogs in this county who have no home except the foster care and hopefully eventual adoption. Now, the option is, you just kill them all. And that's what some counties do. I beg of you not to do that, but to work with the animal rescue groups to improve those lives, to protect these animals, and to assist the animal rescue groups in doing that. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Davis.
Layla. Good evening. My name's Laura Davis, 1316 North Lakewood Drive, Shelby. Thank you in advance for your time. CARE. Clifford's Army Rescue Extramuganza, a group of people, all walks of life, varied backgrounds, all ages, uniting with a single mission, committing to helping with compassion, hard work, and integrity. The difference we make in the lives of people and pets is substantial. Why? Because we're givers. Here are just five examples of how we pursue this mission. Number one, eight to 10 cars are waiting in line along Sumter Street, 30 minutes early for the CARE pet food giveaway. One lady bundled with a coat and a scarf standing by her upright rolling basket says, "Thank you, bless you, because I feed 14 cats." Number two, the tenacious help of Tammy Freeman. Last year facilitated the spaying and/or neutering of over 1,000 cats in 2024. Conservatively speaking, if we assume 500 were female cats with a potential to procreate two litters, each litter five kittens. Tammy has successfully stopped over 5,000 kittens from entering into the population in this county in a single year. Number three, Deb Harden. A compassionate person with a heart for animals. Her phone often rings with members of the public asking for help with an injured or a sick dog or puppy. Assistance in finding a pet, to offer companionship, requesting help for fostering a pet, or a pet owner transitioning to assisted living, needing to owner surrender their beloved pet. A dog hit by a car with life-threatening injuries. Request for pet food. Financial help for our spay and low-cost spay-neuter mobile clinic. Help capturing a homeless pet, and many more requests. Thank you, Deb. Number four, more cars than I can count line up for the CARE microchip clinic. An arguably a vital cause to reunite lost pets with their owners. Number five, last, blessing of the animals. An annual tradition held at a local winery whereby people bring their pets to be blessed at Christmas time. Others donate a small fee in exchange for a commemorative light in honoring of a pet who may have passed or in hopes to foster or find a forever home for another pet. With helping hands and a caring heart, the Clifford's Army, the volunteers of, excuse me, the volunteers of Clifford's Army do an excellent job of giving hope to the hungry, love to the lost, empathy to the emaciated, heart to the homeless, and security to the suffering. Lastly, I'd like to offer a quote by a well-known author and a longtime dog rescuer, Tia Maria Torres. She says, "My mission is to rescue. It's my hope that one day I don't have to." Thank you.
Next is Paisley. Is it Paisley? Paisley, through.
Good evening, you guys.
Good evening.
I'm kind of piggybacking with everything else that's happened. I came to the last meeting. I heard some of the opposing things that have been said. I've been volunteering over a year now with Clifford's. It's an organization that I've heard of for years, but I didn't really start digging deep into about a year ago. I know there's other rescues. There's other, like, local organizations that have been here that have spoke out. And through social media, through word of mouth, if there's a dog in need, the people that everybody call or suggest or reach out to ends up being CARE or Deb Harden. We've done so many different things. There's the microchip and spay that Laura mentioned, the trap and release. I live at 603 West Graham. I forgot to mention my address. But even in my neighborhood alone, there's just, like, an overwhelming amount of strays. I help feed some of those strays that's outside. Like, it is a county-wide problem that every single day, CARE is trying to help put a dent in that problem, help fix, amend, but it takes everyone to try to help. And if people would stop, you know, bashing and hearsay, and everybody take the time to help and look at the problems and look for solutions instead of being petty and, you know, looking to gouge person to person and help these animals in need that don't have a voice, that can't, you know, animals don't work. They can't, you know, go get a job to get, take, provide for themselves. They're animals, they're pets, they're living, breathing beings that need people like us that are here to help. And I just.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, what was your address? I was writing on your comments.
It says, "Re-yes, Ream."
Thank you.
Dana Kristin? I try.
Dana Kristin, 215 Eagle Cove Drive, Cherville. I'm here this evening to show my support for Clifford's, Deb Harden, and Tammy Freeman. I can agree that the conditions and volume of animals being fostered at Tammy's over the last few years has not been ideal when compared to the eventual home situation in which Clifford's hopes to place all of the dogs. Similarly, there are people currently living in less-than-ideal conditions in western North Carolina, but they are alive. And generous, caring people are working toward improvement. We are in crisis mode with animal welfare. Can you imagine if you poured your time and money into helping your fellow Carolinians, and it was then suggested that you did not have their best interest at heart because you provided what might not be considered ideal shelter? Can you imagine someone criticizing a building inspector that had the nerve to put a citizen in a building that is not up to code rather than have them be homeless? That is where we are with the suffering animals. There are dogs living in this county who would be in exponentially better circumstances at Tammy's than the conditions to which their owners subject them. That is, if they even survive. The problem isn't the less-than-ideal fostering conditions. The problem is a community that accepts the behavior of a not insignificant portion of the population that allows this crisis to continue. They're working diligently to meet the requirements. Until then, more dogs are turned away to suffer and die. Any attempt to vilify the very people whose lives revolve around saving them is akin to vilifying an establishment for exceeding max capacity by welcoming in people to provide shelter from a tornado. It's hard to be perfect in a crisis. It's even harder when time and resources are being wasted to criticize those who are doing their best. We can't let perfect be the enemy of progress. Deb and Tammy have together done more than almost all of us combined to help the animals in this community, and I'm immensely grateful for all that they do. It is inconceivable to me that anyone would feel otherwise. Thank you, Deb, and thank you, Tammy, for all of your selfless dedication to saving lives. Thank you.
Next is Ginger Bullock.
Ginger Bullock, 119 Laurel Ridge Drive, Cherville. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of all of you up here, especially Deb Harden and Clifford's Army Rescue Extramuganza. For nearly a year, Allison Steele has been on a rampage to discredit Deb Harden, all commissioners, county manager, Tammy Freeman, and Clifford's Army Rescue. This all started immediately after her buddy Brad Gates resigned as Director of Animal Services. Ms. Steele has repeatedly stated verbally and in writing that Brad's resignation and so many other problems at Animal Services are a direct result of Deb Harden's overreach. Ms. Steele and her flunkeys have stood here many times accusing Deb Harden and all of you of committing crimes in this county. Deb has been accused repeatedly of, and I quote, "Misuse, misappropriation, and fraudulent use of county goods and services, taking supplies and services from the county without compensation, removing dogs from the county shelter without record." I guess that means she's stealing dogs. And other things that I don't have time to discuss. Commissioners and county manager, she accuses you of, and I quote, "Turning a blind eye and deaf ears to all these illicit activities, allowing one of your own to get away with unacceptable and inexcusable overreach, making reprehensible choices for your Animal Services Advisory Board." Where's the proof? I haven't seen any. Now, it is imperative that I clear up one thing this venomous group totally misrepresented. I am speaking of the alleged citations for 14 violations at 516 Bethlehem Road. This inspection by the Department of Agriculture Veterinary Division on October 15th was a courtesy facility compliance inspection. CARE called them and asked them for this inspection. Just like when you build a house, there's a series of inspections that happens. They inspect, write up what is lacking, and tell you what needs to be fixed. That is exactly what inspectors James and Shore did. They had no intention of fining us at that time, and they know we are working diligently to fix all items. We have had open communication with these officers since the first day they came out. They want us to get it right, and they have been most helpful with suggestions. It has taken a lot of time, energy, planning, sweat, and money to get this facility to meet the requirements of a licensed shelter. Thank God, we have so many dedicated volunteers that have poured their heart and soul into this project. With just a little more work, it will be done. We are getting close to the final inspection. Then, Tammy Freeman's and Clifford's Army Rescue's dream will become a reality. This defamation of character and slander has to stop. I don't know where your legal team has been lately, but they have not served you well. Hopefully, they will now. These are serious charges against you, not just one of your own, but all of you and CARE. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Terry Ward.
How are you, sir? Good. Terry Ward, 2103 Windermere Lane, Shelby, North Carolina. What she said. That's the thing about going fourth or fifth, and, you know, all your bullet points are covered. But I just wanted to leave by saying I'm totally biased toward Clifford's Army. I've invested, my wife and I have invested our time, our effort, and our money to help these out. Facts, there's over 150 dogs between all the, this is some of the volunteers that are here. Nobody gets paid. This incredible person does this for nothing out of the goodness of her heart. It's, man, it's really emotional what she does. Because of the way this county, we don't have the, you know, up north, it's, if you have a pet, they have to be spayed or neutered, or it is against the law, you will be fined. They will take your, you know, you've got to be a licensed shelter or a licensed breeder to have a pet that is not spayed or neutered. Here, you've got backyard puppy meals. You know, we're, oh, man. We're taking, we're trying to plug a 12-inch drain that is gushing water at us with our thumb. You know, we're all volunteers. We're all over the place. We're doing, you know, we have procured the Earl Owensby Studios, and we're working hard to get that so that we got a place to do that. You know, we've spent a bunch of money trying to get Tammy's. You know, our goal is to have these dogs be safe and fed and be healthy. You know, are they the happiest dogs in the world? No. Do we wish we didn't have to leave them in a state-approved pen? You know, we'd love nothing better than them to have a home and be out running, but, I mean, that's unfortunately, that's the reality. Animal Control here has a $2 million budget. When I think about what we could do with $2 million, I mean, come, join us, work with us. Let us, you know, we want to help. You know, sit down with us. I will personally take any of you anywhere to show. You can come to our home. You can see our three foster failures. We'll take you to Owensby and show you what we got, what we've done, what we want to do. I will hit you up for a contribution, for a donation, you know, and I will embarrass you until you do. I mean, I'm a totally biased person for this organization, and I can empathize with the gentleman here with the noise. I mean, we'd love nothing better than for Tammy to just have her own pets, you know, but the dogs, it's a place. They're there, they're safe, they're cared for. Transparency, you know, where, what's being done with that $2 billion that Animal Control has to work with? We know, you know, they've got paid people. They're, you know, transparency is what we're asking for.
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Yes, sir. Come see for yourself. I'm available. Anybody wants to contact me, my cell number, 704-692-2254. You call me, I will come pick you up. I will take you anywhere you want to go, show you anything you want to see. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Charlotte Pierce.
Charlotte Pierce, 142 Zep Klein Road, Shelby. I'm not good at talking. I might pass out. Just be aware of that. So, let's go. Okay, so I would like to share of how I came to know Deb Harden. I moved here two years ago, and there was this large white boxer roaming the area. He had sores on his body, patches, fur missing, tons of fleas, and his rib cage was showing signs of hunger. We were able to catch him. I called the Animal Control and asked them if they could come and pick him up. No one ever showed up. Two days later, I called Clifford Animal Rescue, and Deb Harden answered the phone. I asked her if she could take a dog in, and she said that her fosters were maxed out, but she would try the hardest she could to find a foster. I asked her if there was a vet who would give a discount to help with the cost to have the dog treated. She said she'd call me back, and she did in a half hour. She told me to take him to Boulevard Vet, and Clifford Rescue would cover the costs. I was blown away that she was willing to cover the costs for a dog she never saw and a person she never met. I knew that this was a person who loved animals to her core and would do everything in her power to help an animal in need. in her power to help an animal in need. I was impressed and became a volunteer. As a volunteer, I met Tammy Freeman by transporting Clifford dogs from her place to rollover patch to show for adoption. Her dogs are always clean and good health, some recovering from horrible skin issues that she would take on. They are happy, playful, well-fed, and well-cared for. They get along with each other and with dogs that they've never met. Tammy Freeman is not only dedicated to the dogs, but is well to the cats. Last year, Tammy trapped 1,033 cats, had them spayed and neutered, and returned them back to their location. Imagine how many baby kittens were spared from being born into a homeless scary situation. Tammy loves her dogs and her cats. Take a moment to picture, what if Clifford Army Rescue, the Deb Hardens, the Tammy Freemans, the dedicated volunteers did not exist? There would be three to four times or more dogs and cats out there than there are already now, running around scared, starving, no water to drink, dying, freezing, overheated, confused. Why were they dumped on the road or left at the roadside in a box? Hurt, lonely, with no one to love or care for them. Not a pretty picture. In closing, I'd like to say that Cleveland County is blessed to have Debbie Harden, Deb Harden, Tammy Freeman, and all of Clifford Army Rescue volunteers and fosters fighting to give dogs and cats their chance of living the dream. Thank you.
And next, we have Stefan or Stefan Kristen? Stefan, I guess. Obviously, Mr. Kristen.
That's fine, that's good. My name is Stefan Kristen. I live at 215 Eagle Cove Drive. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight. I'd like to add my voice to all of the things that you've heard so far and reiterate what a wonderful job this organization does. I'm a former Marine attack pilot, retired American Airlines pilot. I was looking forward to moving here and relaxing, maybe having a few liver mush sandwiches. But my wife loves dogs, and I love my wife, so I got involved in this. And I've spent a lot of hours helping to make something out of care that will help the dogs in this county. We, these volunteers you see behind you, they have all said everything that's in my heart about Clifford's Army. But what you don't see is the effort, the time, in a lot of cases, the blood put in in some of these things when we're trying to rebuild Earl Owensby and make a facility to relieve what Tammy is doing and give these dogs a facility that is up to code. That's what we're working at so diligently to do. These inspections that we've had, they have given us guidelines of what we need to do, and we're working very hard to do that. I don't think this is a question of, you know, is any sort of reprimand, is anything going to be taken away, is the county board going to do something? But this, you know, this conflict that has arisen has put a spotlight on this organization. And I have run Toys for Tots where I used to live, and I know what it's like to run a volunteer organization like this. Deb and Tammy are doing a tremendous service to all these animals, and why doing it? They bring together all these fine people who have good intentions and just want to help, and they've created a community, and I've gained friendships because of this, because these people are all dedicated, wonderful human beings, trying to do their best to help these animals. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
The chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank all of Clifford Rescue. I personally know that they do put out quite a bit of effort, and they save a lot of animals. I personally, as Commissioner, like to thank all of you and even Deb. Appreciate you.
Again, I'll call your attention to the consent agenda. You all have been, we have been presented the consent items in your packets. You've had opportunity to read over those. Before we, before I call for motion, I would like to make comment on G and J in case anyone's here or anyone's watching that hears this or sees it later. And issue a thanks to the members of the Kings Mountain City Council for working with the county board of commissioners and county planning and the manager's office to solve the final few remaining items with the transition of the ETJ or extraterritorial jurisdiction around the city of Kings Mountain. This will satisfy some of the concerns from some remaining citizens, parcels that are in these areas identified in these two actions that we're fixing to vote on. So again, thanks to the city council of Kings Mountain, the city manager's office, county manager's office here, this board, and Chris for working diligently to get this resolved. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Submissed.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Unless you carry your items. Next item on the agenda is a regular agenda, this is a 2024 audit presentation. Mr. Thompson.
I'm just going to wait one moment while the clerk passes out the presentation summary packet and the full audit report. It'll also be presented on the screen as well.
You didn't have any snow tonight?
Sorry.
I said you didn't have any snow tonight?
No, sir.
Clear sailing, huh?
Clear sailing, all the way from Fuquay.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
About three hours.
Coming through Charlotte's about three and a half when you hit the traffic.
Peak time, you're right.
Yes, sir. I've got friends who live in Kings Mountain who told me to come over after, so I was like, okay, great. I won't say no. All right. Okay, I believe you all have the packets in front of you, and we're going to be looking at the black packet tonight. All the information that we have in here can also be found in your full audit report, but it's more useful to pull out some key items to look at for this presentation. So, starting at the top. We're going to look at the letter to governance. This states that we've audited the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in accordance with the government auditing standards, and in accordance with the contract which we signed dated with the county April 24th, 2024. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. One new significant accounting policy was adopted for fiscal year '24, that's GASB Statement 100, accounting changes and error corrections. Accounting estimates are always an integral part of the financial statements, but we noted no significant estimates or assumptions during the course of the audit. Lastly, for this, the disclosures in the financial statements are neutral, consistent, and clear, and we encountered no difficulties when dealing with management or performing and completing our audit. On page two. We're not aware of any uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements that would be material. We had no disagreements with management. Our letter was signed December 12th, 2024. There were no independent accountants consulted during the course of the audit. And then we do have a couple of other audit findings or issues which we need to cover. Firstly, there's a finding for the financial statements for 2024-001 relates to a correction in a previous report error. Sorry, I think I might have this a little too close. And we will cover that in the required communication later in this packet. And then findings 2024-002 through 2024-006 are related to Medicaid and food stamps, and those are also disclosed in the compliance section of your full audit report. We did note that the county has a significant number of P cards assigned to employees, and they are a very convenient way to conduct business, but they also bring with them increased risk associated with P cards, for example, personal use. Based on our review, the finance staff doesn't spend significant time each month reconciling the P card transactions, which is good, and the county should consider the savings that are generated from the P cards and if they outweigh the risk of misappropriation of funds. Additionally, the county has a significant amount of restricted cash associated with unspent grants, and some of those funds could be receiving or should be receiving more allocation of the interest based on the cash held in those respective funds. So our advisement is to look at how the investment earnings are being allocated to each fund. Lastly, and going on to the next page, the local government commission will no longer initiate a communication with the county, and now they have us prepare a report that identifies any financial performance indicators of concern. Excuse me, the only financial performance indicator of concern identified relates to finding 2024-001. In the other matters, sorry, in the other matters, we use the information provided by actuaries for the local government employees retirement system, the register of deeds, net pension asset, the other post-employment benefits, and the law enforcement officer's special separation allowance. We do not audit that information that comes from the actuary, we use their reports. And there is one new GASB pronouncement, GASB number 101 for compensated absences, which management will need to be ready to implement for fiscal year 2025. Going into page four. You can see here, we've pulled out metrics that we think are going to be most useful for the board in evaluating the performance of the county and comparing it over five fiscal years. So looking at the fund balance, fund balance was 58.5 million. Unavailable fund balance was 10.7 million. Restricted, committed, and assigned fund balance was 27.6 million. And here, I would like to make a note as well, I do believe that there might have been some questions relating to the committed and assigned fund balance. More can be explained on both exhibit C in your full audit report and page 37 as well. General fund expenditures were 157.4 million. The fund balance available as a percentage of those expenditures was 30.36%. Unassigned fund balance was $30,300,000. An unassigned fund balance percentage was 19.27. Looking at your revenues, over/under expenditures before considering transfers, your general fund was a loss of 1.3 million. Other governmental funds had a gain of 3.8 million, and the solid waste had a gain of 378,000. Cash in the general fund was 58.9 million. Cash in other governmental funds was 129 million. Cash in the solid waste fund was 8.9 million. We've covered the fund balance for the general fund, but for the other governmental funds, it was 44.8 million and 3.4 million for the solid waste. Property tax rate was consistent over the previous two years at .6875. Your collection percentage, again, was 98.28%, and the collection percentage excluding motor vehicles was 98.10%. The total property valuation was 11.3 billion with a levy amount of 77.8 million. And then here, you can see a breakdown of your debt for your limited obligation bonds, your installment contracts, your contractual obligations, and your leases and IT subscriptions, the largest portion of which is your installment contracts at 33.7 million. On page five, you have a breakdown of your general fund revenues and your general fund expenditures. As expected, your general fund revenues were primarily made from ad valorem taxes. And your general fund expenditures, the largest outlay was public safety, followed up by human services, and then education. And starting on page six, you have a graphical representation of the information which we've covered on pages four and five. The reason why we include this, it helps to be able to see the trend if things are going in the right direction. So your fund balance for 2024 was down slightly from 2023, but over the course of the five years, it is up. Your restricted, committed, and assigned again was up from 2023, and it has been growing slightly since 2020. Your fund balance available was 30.36%. This is down from 2023, and it is below the group weighted average of 47.21%. And I do want to note, the group weighted average is always going to be a year trailing as the state awaits audit reports to come in. They prepare that number, and then they provide it to us. On page seven, the analysis of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures, that was down to 19.27 from its high in 2023 of 27.96. I will note 2024 is still higher than the other three years presented. At the bottom of page seven, you can see your analysis of revenues over and under expenditures. The general fund did have a loss this year while the solid waste had a small gain. On page eight, at the top, you can see a comparison of your cash balances and your fund balances. The largest portion of your cash is held in your other governmental funds, followed by your general fund, and then last, your solid waste fund. And then for your fund balances, the largest is your general fund, followed by your other governmental, and then your solid waste. And at the bottom of page eight, you can see your property tax rate. It's been steady over the previous three years. It is slightly higher than the group weighted average of .6627. On page nine, at the top, you can see the collection percentages. The county is at 98.28%. Again, this is the same as 2023. It is slightly below the group weighted average and the statewide average, but of still a very healthy collection percentage. And at the bottom of page nine, your debt analysis, and as noted, the governmental installment contracts makes up the lion's share of your debt. And on page 10, at the top, you can see a breakdown of your general fund revenues, and then at the bottom, your general fund expenditures by percentage, and as noted, ad valorem taxes were the largest portion of revenues, followed up by your local option sales tax, and then your intergovernmental revenues. And then for expenditures, the largest portion is public safety, followed by human services and education. On page 11, we have our additional required communications, so these are the items which we're required to communicate to the board, and from this presentation date, you will have 60 days to respond to the LGC. The only one that we have is finding 2024-001, a correction of an error, which notes that the county changed fixed asset software and identified several errors and has previously reported fixed asset costs and accumulated depreciation. The effects of those errors was a decrease of 156,000 on governmental activities and a decrease of 208,000 in the solid waste fund and, as a result, the business-type activities. That concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a question, I don't know if the audit includes it or not, but the solid waste has got a schedule. The state's supposed to bring in so much money, $20 million for capping off things or whatever. Was that audit, or is that another section?
If there's a schedule relating to that, it would probably be disclosed in the notes to the financial statements if the solid waste is meeting, is meeting its commitment.
You know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Care to expand to explain the general fund fund balance, the 27% to the 19%? What accounted for that spike?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I think the most helpful explanation is going to come from page 37. I did note that on exhibit C, you can see the total balance there, but on exhibit 37, you can see an actual breakdown of those committed balances. And the largest of those committed balances at the very bottom of page 37, I'll give a little bit of time to turn. The largest of those was to public safety at 7.7 million, and that relates to the CCJC Center. So that's committed fund balance committed by the board for those projects. There's also a committed of 507,000 for cultural and recreational, and then for the general government, there's 412,000 committed as well. So that would contribute to the 8.5 million contributed in the general fund and the increase from the previous year in the committed balance.
Does any board member have questions? Anything else, Alan?
No, sir.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all, and have a good night.
All right, sir. Drop careful.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. First, Madam Clerk, we'll start with the City of Shelby's only Board of Adjustments, the ETJ representative.
Yes, sir. So, I'll try to find my place. Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to make one appointment for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. All applicants have been vetted and do live in the City of Shelby's ETJ.
Members of the board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Noel McArthur.
Oh, second.
We have a motion for the name mentioned, is there any discussion? Right here, and all the favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next, Madam Clerk, we'll do number six, which is the Board of Equalization and Review.
Yes, sir. Board, this is a yearly appointment that you all do. These people on the list up for appointment would be your board appointments. I'm going to, if it's the pleasure of the board, I will read the list as a whole, and you all can approve it, all of the names in one motion, if that's okay. So, we have Marvin Hutchins, Keith Miller, Tommy Green, Ron Humphreys, Dennis Martin as the five primary members. Gary Hastings and Daniel Shires have been recommended to serve in the two alternate spots of those. All seven of those would be serving a one-year term ending April 1st, 2026.
Also, make a point before I call for a motion, we need also, once the first one's done, we need to appoint a chair and vice chair for this. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, first motion I'll entertain is a motion to approve the names mentioned.
Summed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All the favor will say aye. Any one opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous, so that's the seven members. Five regular members and two alternates for the Board of Equalization and Review. Next, I need to entertain a motion for, we can do them together if you guys prefer, we need to appoint a chair and vice chair.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Marvin Hutchinson as chair and Ron Humphreys as vice chair.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All the favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a closed session. Closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A6 to consider qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee. That's the reason we're going into public session. Mr. Attorney, does that meet the purpose for a closed session?
Yes, Chair.
All right, is there a motion to enter closed session?
Motion, give them closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Board should be reminded, we're in closed session, we'll reconvene in the conference Open session now, during closed session, the board heard a report from the manager and gave staff to, gave direction to staff. With that, brings us to the end of the agenda. Before I call for a motion to adjourn, the Board of Commissioners will meet again on